First on the agenda is the amendments to the last meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion, second, to approve the amendments to the last meeting. Is there a question? All those in favor who signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Three ayes. Next is highway department contract appointment. Our current highway superintendent has had some emergency surgery last week and it's a big enough operation down there that, well quite frankly, it doesn't need me running it or any of the other commissioners because we're not knowledgeable. So we have asked our former superintendent who graciously accepted to come back as a contract employee to fill in while our current superintendent is ill and for any vacation time or days off, whatever, that's mutually agreeable to the current superintendent to cover for him. So this is the contract. Our attorney has looked over it. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve temporary contract between Fayette County and Mr. Jay Havlin. Is there a question? All those in favor who signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Three ayes. And he's just got one signature. Next on the agenda, department reports. Mr. Gray has something that needs to do. Mr. Appel.
I'll note this will come up under old business, but the ordinance is to clarify the employee retirement insurance policy. Do you want to bring that?
Yes, go ahead.
This is basically a resolution that was passed in January, but it's going to be a written ordinance to amend the employee handbook, so it's a part of the handbook and all employees can look at it. We'll explain further.
I'll just read the ordinance. An ordinance to clarify the retirement insurance policy for county employees when there are two members of a family eligible for insurance through employment with Fayette County, State of Indiana, to be effective for all employees of Fayette County, May 19, 2015, and applied retroactively to January 1, 2015. County employees for purposes of this ordinance shall include all employees of the county who are eligible for health insurance through their employment with the county. When there are two members of a family eligible for insurance through Fayette County, they shall remain on active employees policy until one retires. At such time, they shall be eligible for county insurance at the rate in the policy of the longest employed person. Be it ordained by the county commissioners of Fayette County, Indiana, that this ordinance is an amendment to the employee's handbook and embodies the decision of Fayette County Board of Commissioners to clarify the retirement insurance policy for employees of the county as described here and approved by the Board of Commissioners of Fayette County, Indiana, this 19th day of May, 2015. And I hope that explains everything to everyone. Appreciate it.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. The ordinance number to be easily assigned, I assume.
Kathy.
Okay. Question? All those in favor who signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Three ayes.
And then I think this will come up later, the deferred compensation for the sheriff.
Yeah, Mr. Calloway's going to speak at that time. We can hold off.
Yeah, we'll wait for that. Besides that, I don't really, I don't have anything else that needs to be discussed right now.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Next would be Ms. Michelle Dudley, Community Corrections.
Last Thursday, I met with the IDOC for our grant review hearing and we did score 96 on the grant itself, on the written grant. And the top paper is the letter of intent towards Fayette County Community Corrections, $435,764 for the fund year, 15-16, which would be in July 1 of 2015. The contract is also attached. I would need approval on the, of the contract from the commissioners. They have changed the format as far as signatures required. It only requires the county auditor signature at this time and they are going to electronic signatures and you would be able to add additional signatures once that's in place if the county so desires. But I need a motion to approve the contract.
You mean a 96 is all you could get out of 100?
That's it.
That's useful, Michelle. Job well done.
Thank you.
Are there any questions of the commissioners?
No, just congratulations.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the contract for $435,764 grant.
I second it.
There's a motion and a second to approve the grant from the State of Indiana to Fayette County Community Corrections. Question? All those in favor who signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Mr. King?
Just have one thing that I need to get approval for today. It's time to renew our Barracuda email filter. That's $800 for a year, roughly $8 per email. In the last 30 days, we had 97 active emails and we're basically paying for 100, so that number goes up and down, but we're staying right around that 100. I didn't get pricing for how much it would be for the next package they've got, which is a three-year. It saves roughly $125 to get three years. I didn't think it was worth it because we may decide to go with another solution next year or the year after.
And how much was it total?
$2,275 for three years. So you save $125 total.
Okay. What was it for the year?
800.
Okay.
And I've got the 800 in my budget to where I can do that. For the last year, we've got, we had 404,000 emails allowed through and it blocked 204,000 spam emails. So it's a significant time savings as far as that goes. And this runs continuously all day long, so along with our spam filter that's actually in our email system. So I just need to get approval for that so that I can get that renewed so we don't lapse on that and go from there.
I make a motion to approve the $800 a year contract through Barracuda.
Yeah.
For one year.
I second the motion.
Motion, second, to approve the contract with Barracuda for $800. Is there a question? All those in favor who signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Three ayes.
That'll take us through June of 2016, so. And then we don't really have anything else going on. We've been repurposing some old machines to other things, just trying to keep from having to buy new computers, so go from there.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do a good job. Phil McDaniel here.
Yes, I am.
Couldn't see you.
I was hiding back in the corner. You do the same thing in high schools, you might be in the back row. But, okay, I guess, want to, okay, the, for the public hearing for the amendments to the separation distance for the area zoning code, for the wind energy ordinance rules, that was tabled. And the hearing will be next Thursday from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. out at White's Auditorium.
The date is what, 28?
Yep.
At what time, I'm sorry?
7:00 to 9:00.
Okay.
Have it reserved.
And at that time, the board will vote and make a recommendation forward to the commissioners, correct?
Yep, that'll be correct. So then should be, was it the second, I think, is your first meeting of the year, so. The paperwork ready, so that, since it follows a lot more closely than usual, I'll just have the paperwork ready to, I'll probably leave it to that Friday morning because I know it's a little later than getting on the agenda on Friday, but I'll get it to you Friday morning so you can be placed on the agenda.
I prefer not to have a meeting that we know was going to be extended during our regular meeting. How do the other two of you feel about that? I would rather have a special meeting that doesn't combine a lengthy process with our normal day-to-day business. That way, that meeting can be set aside specifically for the hearing.
That sounds good to me.
That would be fun.
Would you, would you care to go ahead and tentatively choose a date? If the, if they have their meeting on the 28th, we could have it anytime the first or the second week. I think, I don't, I wouldn't go much past that myself. And that would give us time to study both what was said and everything like that.
Do you want to do Wednesday, the 3rd?
Actually, I second one like the following Tuesday on the night.
Okay.
Is that convenient for you?
Of course, I know.
Okay. The commissioners will tentatively, tentatively set our public hearing date on what the APC's recommendations to us on June the 9th. And we should probably do it in the evening. So the, it will be evening hours as yet to be determined. We'll announce that publicly when the, when we actually get it in there, we'll tell you what hours. But I think to make it available for anybody that wants to come, daytime for people who are working is not really great, so we'll tentatively set that for June the 9th.
Well, that'll also be beneficial, give it a little bit more time to have, yeah, they won't be approved yet, but at least you'll have a draft of the minutes.
You want to go ahead and set the time? 7:00 to 9:00?
Yes.
Okay. We'll go ahead and set the time on that date at 7:00 to, 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Anything else for us, Mr. McDaniel?
That's it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
You're welcome. See you later.
Thank you. Is there a sheriff law firm here? You can't hide no matter where you go. No matter where you sit in class, you're gonna know.
I seem to stick out. I had a jail officer that resigned last week. He was just ready to move on to a new career, left on good terms, but left us that day. So, no two weeks' notice. So I had a young man that had reached out to us about a job. He did a recent graduate of Vincennes University, Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice, is Justin Gray. And when I say recent, it was about three weeks ago he graduated, so he is 21. His dad's John, who runs the garage over on Third Street. Very good young man, not even a long time. I think he would be an asset or an apartment, so I would like for you guys to approve his hire if you would.
Well, I've known John for years. He was Sheriff's Department's mechanic when I was sheriff and before, currently still is.
Still is.
And John is a good man. You're right. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we allow Joey to hire the young man.
Second.
It's a motion, second, to permit the sheriff to hire Justin Gray for the position of jailer. Is there a question? All those in favor who signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Do, do we want to do the retirement?
Yes, please.
Okay. This is Mr. Calloway from Morgan Stanley. The last meeting, we discussed the retirement, the 457B plan, and I had submitted to Mr. Appel the sample ordinance to pass for that, so. Chris Calloway with Morgan Stanley. I understand my partner Elaine Beatty was here not long ago talking to me about the Indiana Sheriff's Office. There's no cost to the county, there's no cost to the department for this program. What this program really is, is a program Elaine and I actually designed ourselves to help law enforcement get prepared for retirement. If you look at their pensions, the American side or the civilian side, they're really not enough to supply their retirement needs. What we want, what we designed this program is a way to educate them as far as what they need, help them determine how much they need to be saving to reach that goal and do it in a low-cost manner. Once we designed the program, we gave it to the Indiana Sheriff's Association, so it's theirs. It's a group of seven sheriffs who make all the decisions on the program. We would just like the opportunity to be able to offer it to your merit and civilian employees of the department. I'm here to answer any questions.
I understand there's also a state, not the Perth, but an additional state retirement or?
Yeah, I believe the State of Indiana has a plan called Hoosier Start. It's actually run by, if I understand it correctly, I'm not an expert on it, it's run by an organization called Great West Retirement Services. So it's, it's similar in that, you know, there's lots of forms of APSS. Generically, we call them APSS. So, you know, this is what we're offering through the Sheriff's Association is a, is a 457B plan. What Great West Retirement Services out of Denver would offer through Hoosier Start would also be under the heading of 457B plan. But once you look beyond that, they're vastly different programs, designed to do different things.
I've worked with Mr. Calloway before when I was sheriff and he's very knowledgeable, very upright, and I think that if he's bringing this to us, it is something that will probably, that will benefit the Sheriff's. Do you agree, Sheriff?
I agree.
I would like to make a motion that we approve this. I talked to Gertrude, she said, she's talked to several other auditors, and there is no problem with her group being able to install this and provide that plan. She said that Elaine said that she would be willing to come and help her with the tax forms and the, whatever has to go on the W-2s and take care of the federal department, make them happy. But I think we need to make a choice that they cannot have both plans, either the state plan or this one. That's two different retirement plans in there. That would be confusing. So if you're going to accept this one, they wouldn't be able to have the one with the state. You'd have to take their choice.
Is there a problem with that legally?
I don't know off the top of my head. Are you talking about the one that's available to every state employee?
I don't know. She said it was for the Sheriff's Department, that there's a state program.
Yeah, so I, I don't know the particulars of Fayette County, but I can, in a general sense, there is a program that the state offers. The name of it is Hoosier Start. It's actually run by an insurance company out of Denver. And my understanding is pretty much every county in the state has that program available. Most counties have more than one available to their employees, you know, so you'll find different insurance companies that, that offer it.
I think the problem here is that we could not offer two retirement plans to the same employee. They, they have the choice of it, either one, but that if they accept yours, they can't have the one with Western State or Riverdale County.
And I think what you would find, just as a matter of practice, this program, so we, we actually first offered this program the worst possible time an investor could. We did it in 2008, which is hard to get people to, to save for their retirement in that period of time. And, you know, we started with no employees, no assets, or no participants. Now, I think we're up to about 900 throughout the state. I can't think of any situation where someone said, "I want to contribute to two." Very few people want to do that. In fact, what we usually find is if someone has a balance in a program and they enroll in this, they usually roll over that balance to their new plan. So I think just as a matter of practice, it's probably not something you'll have to deal with. Whether or not legally you can legally tell someone you can't contribute to both, I don't know. There are federal guidelines that tell you how much in total you can contribute for a year, but I don't, I wouldn't be able to speak to whether or not legally you could, you could say, "Well, you can only contribute to one." I don't know that information.
Well, I didn't think it was possible or that most people would be donating to two or.
Yeah, very, very.
Putting money into.
Yeah.
But I think the problem there is if you're making a deduction and you're making, you make one deduction out of a 457B line, line item.
Yeah.
That you can't be splitting the money up and sending it to three different places at the same time.
Yeah. I, to be honest with you, I don't know that. I do know that a lot of counties offer multiple plans.
Yes.
But whether they say you have to pick one, I don't know. I will tell you, as a matter of practice, it's just not what people do. People usually don't want to have multiple service providers have to deal with. They usually like to be.
As a matter of practicality, no better than what we pay, we are able to pay our employees. I doubt that they're going to be contributing to more than one fund. Many of them will probably find it difficult to do this, but I think that if they, looking back, if I had had something available like this to me when I was a police officer, I'd have jumped on that like a duck on a June bug. But I don't think, pressed, I don't, I don't think the availability of two, two different funds will, is going to make any difference. I think people will choose one or the other.
Very good. I need to reset.
I don't think you can make it, you're just voting if you're going to approve this deferral program for the Sheriff's Department. That's what's just an ordinance, you can't condition that on banning them from any future retirement for another fund that might, may or may not be available. I think, we don't think that's going to be an issue in practice anyway, but I don't think you can make a contingency on whether to approve this or not.
Very good. I make a motion that we allow the Sheriff's Department to participate in this 457B plan with, what's your name again?
Well, the plan is the Indiana Sheriff's 457B plan.
The Indiana Sheriff's 457B plan.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve the ordinance establishing deferred compensation plan with the Indiana Sheriff's Association. Is there a question? All those in favor who signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Good to see you again, Chris.
Nice to see you.
Mr. Calloway?
I'm saying.
Dave Calloway? Bobby Smith? And there's no council representative, so we'll go on to mail. Do you have the, you know, did I, did I give that to you?
What, your list of emails?
No. The email from reference to, sorry, file.
Yes.
We have a letter from the Fayette County Public Library Board. Dear Commissioners, Sarah Lee Plow was appointed by the Fayette County Commissioners to the Fayette County Public Library Board Trustees. Her appointment is due to expire. She is interested in renewing her appointment. We have appreciated her years of service. And the rest talks about the enclosed certificate of appointment that's required. Hi, obviously Mrs. Plow's a very knowledgeable retired educator, so what's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion that we reappoint Sarah to the Library Board.
Second.
Motion, second, to reappoint Mrs. Sarah Lee Plow to the Library Board. Is there a question? All those in favor who signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Three ayes. Any other mail, Kathy? Okay. And under old business, we retirement policy update, I think, is what we just did. No, is there, is that, are those two different items, Kathy?
That was in reference to Kenny Cox.
Okay. All right. That was in reference to the ordinance we just passed in reference to the insurance. Mr. Parker?
Good morning. Good morning. Just a short update. First of all, thank you. The last time I appeared before you, we had Jeff Plaster here from Ivy Tech, who is the spearhead to the, I guess, the re-establishment of a regional planning district that Fayette County, along with four other counties, will be involved in. So thank you for your participation there. Also, just by way of update, I attended a, a meeting with a site selector last week in Richmond and also then a summit in Newcastle with the same site selector on Thursday. So it was a Wednesday-Thursday type arrangement where I had some valuable, one-time to help sell Fayette County, the assets of Fayette County, to a very well-known site selector. In fact, her father was one of the very first site selectors when the whole economic development industry started about 35 years ago, which has become a huge industry. And in so doing, our local economic development group has, through the years, developed and grown. One of the things that we're doing right now is we're putting the finishing touches on our strategic plan. And what we would like, what we're going to do is provide to all the elected officials a portion of that plan that deals with elected officials and their role in economic development. And what we would like for you to do at your leisure is take a look at that, give us your honest opinion and your heartfelt feelings when it's convenient for you. And we're, we're interested in your suggestions and your opinions on what we've established. It's about a nine-part strategy and this is one of, one of those parts. And we want to, we want to be holding hands with all the elected officials as we go forward for Conoverville and Fayette County. The other item that I'd like to report to you about is on June 1, Fayette County will go live with the ACT Work Ready Community Initiative. Fayette County will be lit up on the map on the ACT's website. You can go there now, hover over Fayette County, click on it, and you can see where our progress is. We are really pretty far down the road. We have 90% of the workforce requirements met and we are just a hair over 50% on the employer requirements. Those are employers that. Those are employers that have embraced the program. We are, between now and the 1st of June, will be approaching virtually every employer in the, in the county to come on board and use the ACT Work Ready methodology, which really parallels a lot of the work keys being used with Work One today. So this is not a strange animal. It'll be very familiar to everyone. I believe that that's all that I have to report. I do have a question now regarding this, the meeting that will follow the public meeting on the 28th for the wind energy. I got the date, I think you said the, was it the 9th?
9th.
The 9th, and that meeting will be held where at?
We'll have to, in our public announcement. And that date should be tentative because it's going to depend on the availability of the attorneys from both sides being able to be here. So, but I would imagine we would, we could anticipate the same crowd amount of people.
I guarantee it.
So I will try to make contact with the high school and get the wire.
Yeah, and in fairness to both sides, we really need to make sure that we accommodate everybody.
Yes. So that's my plan.
Okay, very good. Any questions for me?
No, thank you for the job you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you for your support. I appreciate it very much.
Thanks, sir. Joyce, there you are, I'm sorry. Joyce McCarty.
One thing I wanted to bring up is that I have requested to pull the claim for Star Development for this docket, and I will correct that and submit a new one for your next meeting. So we have a bid opening, don't we?
Yes. Let the record reflect, all these were sealed and were opened by the Commissioner.
Please, Form B, list all the addresses.
I'm sorry?
I said, bid Form B, list all the addresses, the easiest thing to look at, and their bid.
Okay, I have one from Hopkins Home Improvement, Richmond, Indiana. Address is Peel Box 1064. And their bid for the property, and Kathy, I'll just say these publicly, and I don't want to let you look at these if you want to add to your amendments, for the property at 5620 West County Road 700 North is $20,152. For the property at 2231 South State Road 1, $14,373. For the property at 2383 South Sunset Drive, $14,129. For the property at 3891 South State Road 121, $19,567. For the property at 4966 West State Road 44, $22,431. And last but not least, 2326 East Maple Lane, $22,874.
I have a bid request for D. O. Corn and Sun Incorporated. They are located at 437 East Fifth, Rushville, Indiana. The first one is 5620 West County Road 700 North for $27,600. The second is 2231 South State Road 1 for $13,545. Three is 2383 Sunset Drive for $16,595. Four for 3891 South State Road 121 does not have a bid number. 4966 West State Road 44 is $19,770. Six is 2326 East Maple Lane for $19,710.
And I have this from D. O. Corn and Sun, exactly the same as, same as what, I don't know if they were supposed to submit a copy so that we can take the copy and you guys keep the original.
Okay, and that's what, that's the same with me. Mine is a repeat of what I just read a while ago from Hopkins Home Improvement.
So we have two bids then?
Yeah, two bids. Okay, I've got them all. So.
Do I keep that one?
What is this?
D. O. R., but, and she has a copy.
Neither, neither of these, no, correct.
Just take them under advisement, and we'll come back.
Okay, all right. So a motion to do that?
Motion to take these under advisement and back with Star Development at a later date.
Your second?
My second.
Motion second to take these under advisement, to be completed at a later date. Question? All of the favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Which one?
Two, then motion to second. Two of the old ones are the same. Those are the same. Do you have anything else, Ms. McCarty?
No, well, that's it. We plan on coming back to you in the next meeting, and hopefully we'll have our evaluations done and our recommendations at that time.
If you would, as a way to put her on the agenda for the next meeting. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. He's already scheduled elsewhere?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. We have a note that Mr. Snyder from the opposition's, he is the opposition's attorney, is scheduled for June the 9th. So why don't you, if you have the time, say after the meeting, maybe we can, you can call him and give us a list of dates when he is available, and I'll contact NextEra and do the same for their attorney. We'll come up with a date that is mutually agreeable, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. New business, Mrs. Wright? Good morning.
Good morning. I'm bringing to the Commissioners this morning a resolution to approve the grant for the Fayette County Public Transit.
I'm sorry, I was distracted. You were here for the transportation grant?
Correct.
Okay.
We have a resolution that needs approved for the grant application from the Commissioners.
Do you want to present it to us, or do you want to read it, or is it too lengthy?
It's pretty long.
Okay, so what's it for?
It is for the grant application, the approval of Fayette County Transit. They currently have 13 vehicles in service. Their budget is about $450,000. They employ nine part-time people, four full-time people.
Okay. And you want a motion from us to approve the grant application?
Correct.
I make a motion that we approve the grant application for the Fayette County Transit, which does a wonderful job in Fayette County. I think it's probably the least advertised facility or asset Fayette County has.
And I think this year, we're putting a little more money in advertisement. We're going to be looking at hiring a young man to help our time to get a website up and going, get the name out there a little bit more. You know, there is a huge need in our community. I think they just don't know where to go. I mean, you can ride for $2.50 anywhere, so, in the county, so that's pretty reasonable.
I will second Mrs. King's motion. Motion to second to approve the application for a grant for the senior, excuse me, Fayette County Transportation. Is there a question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And do you have the, all right. The contract on our county's cell phones has expired, and we have to approve a new contract. New contract is about a $2,000 in that ballpark increase, am I correct?
I'm not sure.
Okay. I think it's about a $2,000 increase over and above what has been in the past three or four years.
Actually, I thought there was an out on Friday, so I looked on the front of that.
$557.42. Okay. That per month?
That's the increase. We got it down to that.
Shouldn't we know what the total is for the year so we can have it in the record? Wait. Rent total zero. I like that. Okay, the, the previous cost of the county was like $12,397 along that line, and there's an increase of $557.42. So what is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to accept the new contract with Verizon for cell phones.
Your second. Second. Motion second to approve the new contract with Verizon Wireless. Is there a question? All of the favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. We have one other item under new business, and that is the annual report from the Highway Department, which is being submitted to us. And there are, is there a signature required on all four of these folders?
Those are, she keeps one copy, you make copies of her cell, and the rest of them get sent to the state, I think.
Okay.
All right, bro.
Does she send them to the state or does she?
She sends them. She's got the envelopes, everything made out. She just has, they have to be there by first, I think.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the annual report for the highway garage.
I signed it.
Motion second to approve the annual report for the highway garage. Is there a question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. And patron concerns, Margaret Die? Margaret Die? Okay. Are there any other patron concerns? Ms. Parker?
Concerning that your phone call this morning, there was a little change in that resolution to the, to the governor regarding the formation of the, or the regional planning district. And there are two forms now that we need to redesign. One of them was the one he gave you our last visit, and then there's a new one that eliminates Randolph, or not Randolph, but Henry County. So if I can give those to you, you've already approved it in your last meeting, just a change with the.
Just an additional form.
Exactly. You need to sign both of them though. All right. Thank you.
There's actually no signature line, so is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry.
The signing, and then I think there's a date, signing and dating.
Okay. Let me just get them all back in. Okay. Any other patron concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of payroll and claims.
Second.
Motion second to approve payroll and claims. Is there a question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion second to adjourn the meeting. Is there a question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, the meeting's adjourned.